Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
All second.
Motion made by Leon, seconded by Tia. All those in favor? Motion carries five to nothing. Thank you all for attending this glorious evening. I know we've got stiff competition out there with a nice concert going on. So we're trying to be as brief as we can tonight. It is 6:16, so it is time for the public comment. If there's any members of the audience who wish to address the board on any issues that are not on the public agenda, please come on up, please state your name. Kelly, Kelly, can I have your seat here? I don't see you sneaking in, so.
Kelly.
There you go. Not seeing anybody for public comments, we will move right along.
Cliffy, can I talk? Hello?
New business, item four, Sherri Gould and Daryl Peaslee from the Abenaki Trails Project. Please, again, just for the record, please make sure you state your first and last name. Thank you, and welcome.
Hi, my name is Sherri Gould.
My name is Daryl Peaslee.
I'm from Warner, Daryl's from Kintookuk. We just here to, we wanted to let the selectmen know a project we're working on because in these turbulent times, sometimes people could misunderstand. And we have a very fun, simple project. So we've just, as a courtesy, we've been letting the select boards know in each of the four towns we're working in. Members of the Melheken Band of the Kausak Abenaki Tribe, State-recognized tribe, and we're doing a project around town. Well, it started with Hopkinton, because that's where Daryl lives. And I started by researching the histories, doing a word search on the electronic copies. And what became clear is that most of the artifacts in Hopkinton, or many artifacts, were located in West Hopk, which I knew anyway, being a friend of Bill Marises. And in Hennecker, I was seeing it was in East Hennecker. So that I called Martha Taylor, and she confirmed that, yep, most of the artifacts came from that area. So it became clear there was one village crossing town boundaries. So we brought Hennecker into the project. And then the Warner River goes off the Kintookuk River, so that brought Warner and Rattrick. Four towns, we're identifying historic sites, we're asking select boards for any recommendations of things they'd like to see as part of the project. We're looking to make the history of Abenaki people here clearer and the people today, like us, who are still living here and doing things in our communities, want that better known. So we have a lot of aspects to the project, but one that's pretty exciting to us from the Hopkinton Historical Society, we learned that there's a program called CIO. C-I, Syria?
CLEO.
C-L-E-O, I believe it is, I think Daryl's right. And anyway, it's a mapping program that was developed by academics, historical societies, universities use it, and our tribe was able to get an account. And so we'll be entering points of interest in this map. We can include digital files and pictures and audio. So in the end, what people will be able to do is get on the internet through this app and have a guided tour without us being there. We've done a kayak ride on the Kintookuk River and gotten up to the riverside of Plains where the settlement was. And we're working with, we're in communications with the Rotary Club for Hennecker and Holzbroe, the Hopkinton Rotary Club has already been onboard, come onboard. Historical Society and the Azalea Park Committee is interested in working with us as well. We're also going to be focusing on, we're working with the New Hampshire Historical Society on developing a kit for the schools. That was an idea of the Hopkinton Selectmen. So there'll be like a material kit, and the idea is that when the kids are studying Native Americans, they don't have to travel around the state to try to find a site. They'll be able to look at their own local history, right, in their own communities. So can you think of anything else, Daryl, that?
We're not asking you to bring anything.
No.
Other than ideas. Hopefully it will bring an economic boost to your town, and it will keep people more about how we're going to develop.
So when you, are you going to have a map of like the trails?
Yep.
And you must have done some preliminary research. How many miles of trails are there here in Hennecker that would apply for this?
So we haven't completed that research. We're very early on in the project. We apologize, you're the fourth select board out of the four that we've spoken to, but it's just kind of grew organically. We did talk to the Hopkinton Select Board before anybody else, but including the Historical Society. So it's still unfolding. There's still a site in Hennecker, the Indian Taya, it's called. So we're doing like myth busting along with, we've already busted one myth in Hennecker. There's a story in the town history about Matthew Hughes's wife, who was of Indian extraction, and bear killer's name because she killed a bear up there. So I did her genealogy, I'm a professional genealogist, and she's all English. So I guess at the Victorian times, the history was written. Perhaps it wasn't very cold to think of an English woman killing a bear with a club, but she was an English woman. So we're doing myth busting and also verifying. Sometimes some stories are like partly true, maybe they've been glorified or manisaged. So we're like putting as much, we have archaeologists on the project. And like I said, whoever else wants to join in. So a map will wind up being, in this CIO is the map, it's a mapping program. And it gives you the coordinates of each of the sites we log in and directions of how to get there, the whole thing. So it's, and our goal is to go beyond these four towns. But what was one town turned into four, a little mini trail, and this is kicking off the project. Great.
If you were to do this, would you be there for the residents of the front castle? See what's going on in there, like, on our regular days?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, I can't. Okay.
We have a Facebook page, Abenaki Trails Project. People can follow along with that, there's a YouTube channel. That, any of the Zoom meetings that we've had, we've posted. So you can hear every little look and cradle that we talk about with our backs. And as far as myth busting goes, we busted one in Hopkinton also. For years, they talked about an Indian chimney in the woods. I took an archaeologist with me, we went out, and he specializes in Native American structures, culture. He goes, I have no idea what this is. And if the more he looked at it, he started telling that the farmers in the past, the blue sheep, also subsidized their incomes with charcoal. That's probably what it was, the charcoal. A lot of my best friends in Hopkinton that I grew up with, they come with a jerk. But it's the truth, so. And it's kind of, we call it a trail, that is our name, Abenaki Trails. And I've got people that are busting the same thing. Oh, create a trail like a walk-on, you think so much. And if we find an area that has had artifacts found in it, we're not going to pinpoint where that area is, it's just the area. If we were to put up a sign, post something on a big.
Big deal.
Great, I would like to look on that, if we are.
Sounds like a really neat project.
And our hope is it'll bring tourism into the town, benefit everybody. So truly, if any of you think of any ideas, things you'd like to see us think about, get word to us, and we're open to.
Great.
Yeah, no, you said about Facebook, it turns out that it is in our packet that we've got on Facebook, and I could go on it. And I have to say, this is some brutal stuff on your Facebook. Brutal stuff about the battles that they fought during 1700.
You can't think of us as just murderers, or what? You did other, you did good things too.
Oh, yeah, no, you should write that, there's a lot of detail. You've got detail going back 400 years.
Yes, Brian Shevrenberg is on our committee, and he's our private historian, and he's been collecting those bits of history for years. Because, as he said, he's a historian. So he collected them in books, and we're constantly looking for other sides. Like, one of the things Hopkinton did last year that we loved was they talked about the positive interactions between Europe colonists and Native Americans. And in Hennecker, in his book, we have some really good stories along with one.
Yeah.
In fact, early Hennecker residents were aiding and abetting the Abenaki warriors. So we think that we should tax one of the towns. According to the history, it was that one.
Yeah.
So, anyway, we're trying to fill that anymore, but you're right, it works.
Great, thank you. Any question, any other questions from the board? Go ahead. Now just speak boldly.
Okay, just number one, I tried to speak during the state presume that's not allowed to. So I came down here.
My bad.
Number two, I think it's great what you're doing, but if you're doing trails, I think they should be sent to the government.
I think they just explained it wasn't really trails, just site identification.
And I don't know if you want me to say whether they're going to say they're going to say.
Yes, I will, why don't you come on up to, so my apologies for not circling back on the Zoom part of the public commentary. So if there's any members of the audience, do you maybe you can do a technical support or anybody else that wishes to make a comment? We're going to circle back to public comment because I did not pay attention to the Zoom aspects of it. I was kind of just looking out at the audience. So Jen McCourt, first, you're up.
So on the agenda that's, and notice it's online, it says that if you want to talk about any of the agenda items that you need to do a very public speak. So what I'd like to talk about is the signs that you guys are looking to put up. Personally, have real issues with that, the cutesy little signs. We all know we're supposed to wear masks, it's been all over the news for months. Also, I know you're doing it to support the college, but I could go into many ways where if they have not supported us as in Hennecker. And if you're going to do something like that, I would highly recommend that you make the college pay for it, seeing you're putting up the signs for the college. Because until the college opened, we've been doing great as far as being respectful, wearing masks, and social distancing. And it shows by our numbers. As far as the resolution, I don't have my notes with me because I didn't grab them as I was running out the door, but there's many places where you say must or shall, where if it's just a resolution or it's just a recommendation, you need to change those if you do pass it. Also, I would highly recommend in the first one where you say, was it masks made of cloth or other stuff, that you specifically exclude neck gaiters. Because there was a study done by Duke University showing that neck gaiters are actually worse than wearing nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Point of order, or?
I don't want you to say anything that's not on the agenda. That's the new mask, I'm not a part of it. I'm going to be decided here, I think you're a gentleman now, you're all the vision. So did you say that you don't want to talk about it, or you want to say anything that's on the agenda? That's on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to allow public comment after we discuss? Are we going to open it up to the floor tonight?
What's the board's pleasure?
I'm going to make a motion that we open it up to the floor while we're discussing it.
Do you second to that motion?
Yeah, during the second. Yeah, so that's what I, that's what I get. I'm making a motion to allow public comment during the rest of our agenda tonight so people can ask questions or make statements after the board's discussed and open it up to the floor as we normally do.
And it was seconded by Scott. Further discussion on Tia's motion.
Yeah, I would say that, I think it's quite important because everyone has an interest in it. So, yeah, I hope it's quite important that this board does agree to that because everyone has an interest in it, so we're going to want to hear it.
I can understand what you're saying, but you can't lie to us. I'm going to start speaking here.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so I just said that I hope that this board does approve the fact that we would let the public talk when we have this, um, the number in our, you know.
I mean, we're not saying that this is an important matter.
This is only a test.
Thank you.
I hope that this board approves the request for the members that are in this room here to talk to the ordinance when we do it on the agenda.
Further discussion on the motion. Peter.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if that motion was made for all agenda items, that's what I thought it was.
All agenda items.
All agenda items as it's currently. Further discussion, Leon.
My problem with that is it sounds like it opens up everything on our schedule and we could be here the night repeating the same stuff.
When we were at the town hall, we always opened the floor without motions being made for the public to ask questions or for public to make, the public to make comments or even to get feedback. And all of a sudden, we decided to start restricting that. Something's wrong.
I don't think you're right in that statement because I can recall the board taking a vote on a particular issue that was being spoken at the time if you wanted to let input from the audience. individually, not a blanket vote for the night. And I don't ever remember that happening unless the chairman lost control of the meeting. I will add to this, Tia, that I will support item eight as allowing public discussion when that comes up, but not a blanket vote for the entire night. As Leon said, we could be here late hours just listening and listening. We have business to tend to, the people elected us to handle this business. We do welcome input when we feel it's important. I have changed my mind slightly since last week as far as item eight. I am willing to listen to public comment, but I'm not making any decision on how I'm going to vote on that right now.
Further discussion on Tia's comment, or Tia's motion. Ready to call the vote, all those in favor of public input for all items listed on the agenda? All against. Motion carries three to two. For the sake of expediency, I don't think there's going to be much input on the other items, so. I think I can read a crowd pretty good. With that said, and you have an active track, so anybody else for the Zoom part of the public comment that does not have a chance to speak?
If you have a comment on Zoom, if you could ask or raise your hand so we can then select you.
Can it wait until public comment two in the end, or do you want to address the board?
I don't have to.
Okay, please come on up to the microphone station.
Where are we?
We are, we've circled back to public comment because I was remiss in not asking the Zoom part of our meeting if they wanted to offer any public comment. For you specifically, I are asking about the mask ordinance, we will address that at item eight.
Correct, all right. Jim Ness, Hennecker, Village Green, a couple of issues. First of all, last time we did Zoom, I would like to make an respective point. We could not hear anybody that had a mask. No matter how close you got to the microphone, no matter how, whatever you did, you announced your issue, we could not hear anybody. It was terrible, okay? Number two, everybody up there on WikiMan has a mask. Most of the people around this room have a mask. You're asking people to come up to this lecture to address this august five. When was the last time that was said?
I can't answer that. Did it today.
Sorry?
He did it today.
Okay. Two people walked in talking. I'm not talking, spitty. Somebody's going to follow me, talking, spitty.
We can take care of that.
I think it's a legitimate point.
Absolutely, I agree.
Okay.
Okay, while he's doing that, just to move things along, to your point. I have two masks.
So is this a discussion about masks? Okay, can you say that right, Nathan?
You recognize me to go now.
I recognized you to go now because I thought you had other comments about other aspects.
Okay, sorry, I'm.
Okay.
All right, so thank you. Stayed there, thank you.
George, is there anybody coming from Zoom? Okay, not seeing anybody that wishes to address anything from Zoom. We will now move along to item number five, Cordell Johnson with an election update. Can you hear me, Captain? Cordell, good evening.
Good evening. You with my mask off, people can't usually understand what I'm saying. Just been sanitized, I didn't want to. I just wanted to update you on the upcoming state primary election next Tuesday. Things are going to be a little bit different, not surprisingly, considering the circumstances. First thing is, a lot of people are voting by absentee ballot. And on the special provision in law this year, we are allowed to do partial processing of absentee ballots before election day. We're going to be doing that on Friday morning. We just posted notice today, we'll be doing that Friday morning at nine o'clock. Kim and I will be doing that, the law requires that we have two additional election officials there. So I don't know whether there are any selectmen who might be available at nine o'clock on Friday morning. You don't have to, there's no heavy lifting and there's no complicated thinking. I have one other person who has indicated willingness to do it, and I can appoint her as an assistant moderator. But if there is a selectman who wants to participate.
I can participate, Cordell.
See it, can do it, okay. I know that, I'm guessing it'll take two to three hours. Okay, all right, great, thank you. So we will be doing the partial processing of the absentee ballots. And then we're setting, we're actually setting up the gym school on Thursday morning with assistance from the, from the school in the town, the solid waste, the transfer station crew, right? Setup is going to be a little bit different this year. We're doing everything we can to accommodate concerns about coronavirus. We're going to have, obviously, hand sanitizer, plexiglass shields between the voters and the ballot clerks. We're asking all election officials and poll workers to wear masks. Been informed by the Attorney General's office that we can't require the selectmen to wear masks, but we'll earnestly ask you to wear masks while you're in the polling place. And we will ask, ask all voters to wear masks. We are not going to require a mask to enter the polling place, but we hope that most people will because that will make everyone else more comfortable even if you don't think you should wear a mask. For those who don't want to wear a mask or are unable to wear a mask, we're going to have a separate entrance, separate check-in table. Excuse me? We are going to have a separate entrance, a separate check-in table, a separate voting area, and a separate exit. And most of the other towns I've talked to, most other moderators are actually planning to have an outside voting area, not even letting people into the building. I didn't think that was practical for us. So I think with the space that we have, there's plenty of space that if we have the mask separate from the non-mask, we will be okay. Selectmen, I know that you're planning to be there on and off throughout the day. We could probably use selectmen and if there are any other town employees who might be available to sort of direct traffic and tell people where to go because the setup is going to be a little different from usual. We'll be using the gym and we'll have the regular entrance where people will be coming in, but those without wearing a mask will be coming in where we usually exit as the end. I think that's it, unless anyone has any questions.
Leon, first, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cordell, has anybody said anything about our determined a traffic patent for automobiles? Is it going to be the same as every election? Has there been any revisions in that? Has there been any accommodation for extra police to assist in directing cars? And finally, is there any extra parking such as up in the lots owned by the Congregational Church that will be tying in with this event?
We haven't done anything with parking. I think we will need to look at that for November. I think for the primary, my, my expectation is that the actual physical turnout won't be burdensome. It's a, I think the primary itself is not generating a huge amount of interest and plus, a lot of people are voting by absentee ballot. But I don't think that'll be a problem for next week. I think it is an issue for November, and we will need to look at that.
Secondly, if I may, Mr. Chairman, are you all set for volunteers? I know you just mentioned volunteers, like people helping set it up. But I'm talking about overall, this entire event, do you have what you would consider an adequate amount of volunteers? And I ask that question because that's a problem in most towns.
I think we are. We, all of our ballot clerks are willing to work, which is a lot different from what I've heard from a number of other towns where, where people have said they're just not willing to, not willing to show up. So I think we're in very good shape.
And finally, Mr. Moderator, are the ballot box is going to be separated like one and then skip two, close them off, and then have one for social distancing?
The voting booths?
Yeah, voting booths.
We're going to try to do that. We need to figure out how, exactly how many we need to have. But what we are thinking of doing is, yeah, they have to be set up in a bank. You can't set them up individually, so we'll set them all up in, I think they come in a bank of four. And if possible, we will close up every other one, so there will be some.
Of course, that would, just to comment on that, I would slow things down even more. But I'm just thinking of these questions because I'm going through this in another town and I thought it would be adequate to ask you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you, Cordell, thorough as always.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Wastewater Capital Improvement Plan. And a little bird whispered in my ear. A little bird whispered in my ear that you've been here for 28 years. So on behalf of the selectmen and every, every towns person out there, thank you for your service, and we appreciate it. For now that we softened you up, don't ask anyone.
I agree, thanks for speaking. Hello? All right, three items to discuss tonight. The first one is a budget item, it's already been approved as far as I understand it. I guess you can always pull the plug if you want to. We want to do some cleaning and repairing of some of the stuff that we found and we did the S. when we did the asset management program. So lateral cracks, holes, anything that would cause infiltration. We're looking at doing about, uh, $30,000 worth of that, which would pretty much tie up or button up most of the repairs that we have to make in our system. My count seventeen. So, that'll take care of that. I, I have a handout because I wasn't finished with this, can I come up there, or? That handout is actually for the last item on my list. The next thing is, uh, we do have a capital improvement project this year, uh, which replaces three pumps, two at the West Henneker Pump Station, and one at the Treatment Plant. Um, I have gotten quotes, I believe you all have copies of those prices. And I believe we're looking at right around, uh, twenty, almost 28,000 for West Henneker Pump Station, and about 7,600 for the return pump downstairs. Total, that's, uh, 35,590. That money will come out of our unreserved fund, of which we have right around $400,000 right now. The last item, um, the past, well, since we owned it. Um, we've been plagued with problems with our skid steer as far as leak issues. Bleeds, it really does, it bleeds hydraulic oil. We get it fixed, some of the repairs we can do ourselves, some of them we were sent out. Um, since we've owned it for 23 years, we've spent between seven and eight thousand dollars. And right now, it's leaking so bad that I can barely use it to move our caustic from the belt press to, uh, the grip from. It's just not that far. And if you drive up there, you can see the oil streaks on the road. And we just got it repaired for $3,000 in 2018. But for some reason, it's just not holding up. It's three or four different things, uh, hoses, uh, the two main pumps, and two pressure relief valves that just keep popping. So I, I got one quote for the paperwork that you have. Um, I just received another quote today from Cat. And I'll obviously get at least one more before any decision is required. And right now, it looks like, um, Bobcat is coming in at, uh, 39,363. And that's with, um, our 1997 New Holland skid steer being replaced.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Ken, I just have a question on the skid steer. Um, when we were doing the capital improvement program, it was not, there was no indication of, um, issues with this piece of equipment or potentially needing to be, having it replaced. I also have understood that, you know, you're still using this without it having been fixed, and that's, um, or fixed properly, and it, it's causing wear and tear. When was the last time that you actually sent this out to get fixed?
Uh, November 2019. And in the, uh, capital improvement program on this skid steer sheet, I did list things that we worked on and money that we put into. I believe with that last paper that I just gave you, it has every oil leak repair that we've had done to it since we've owned it, and the amount of money that we've spent fixing.
Have you had somebody at Highway Department take a look at it?
Um, sure, Justin's looked at it several times. It, unfortunately, a skid steer is all encased inside the frame and the body. So in order to get to most of the major components, you gotta have a special tool to tip the cab up, which we don't have. I don't know how much they cost, they're thousands of dollars. Usually that stuff is kept for the, uh, the repair shops. But, uh, yeah.
Further questions on the board? How many hours on this, uh, machine?
Uh, about 1,500.
1,500? Okay, the first piece of work was, uh, in '01, was, um, when, when was it bought?
Uh, 1997.
97. Thank you.
Well, 23.
Further questions from the board? Further questions? Leon? What is it that, what is it that we're being asked to do? Do we need to approve this proposal?
Well, usually, um, the board likes to see at least three prices. So I figured I've got two now, I can go out and get one more, and when I do that, I can come back and we can re-discuss it. No, no, not really. I, I would like a decision on the second item, if we can do that, that'll give me something to do. Well, not that I don't get anything to do, but. For the three pumps, I'd like to get a stack on that, that's gonna take a while.
Would you say it's a, it's a New Holland that you have right now?
Yes.
At 1,500 hours, you're having this much trouble with it?
Well, like I said in that paper that I gave you, you can see all the way down the line, or up the line, you had. Excuse me?
Yep. Is that because of the chemicals you used?
No, not at all. It's, it's oil leaking from the machine, the hydraulic pumps and cylinder pieces. It has nothing, we only use sodium hydroxide and polymer, and, and none of that gets anywhere except where we put it.
Is that the only thing wrong with the machine right now, or it's just got a excessive leak of hydraulic fluid?
Pretty much. I mean, it's 24 years old, it's got some rocks, it needs tires, which we budgeted for this year, but I haven't put those on yet. I don't wanna trade it away with brand new tires.
Do you have any estimate of the value left on it?
Yes, I have two. Um, both people that have quoted it have, uh, Cat gave it $8,000, and Bobcat gave it $6,500. But the Cat machine was way more expensive than the Bobcat.
Great, thank you. Tia?
Well, since we don't need to take any action on this, um, we can move that portion to the next meeting.
Is there some specific direction you want Ken to do regarding item three?
We'll come back with the third bid, and, um, I think Joe should connect with the superintendent of Highway.
Okay, um, so you've got, uh, Peter?
Clarification if I could. Are you speaking of the skid steer, Tia, or the three pumps?
I'm speaking about the skid steer, number two.
Okay. Just ask her.
So I will make a motion, right, so it's 35,590, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
I'll make a motion to allow Joe to sign off on an agreement to purchase the two pumps at the Henneker, for the Henneker, West Henneker Pump Station, and one return sludge pump at the Treatment Plant for the total of 35,590.
Second.
And I'll amend that motion to, to also include, um, the expense for the repairs of a pipe for the collection system up to $30,000 out of the wastewater budget.
Motion by Tia, is there a second? I'll second it, discussion. So the motion is to give Ken authority on two of the three asks, to come back on the third, uh, with some additional information regarding the skid steer, but to go ahead with the repairs of the pipe collection system and the two pumps at the West Henneker Station. Are there any other questions? Ready to call the vote? All those in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Ken, and thank you for your year.
Thank you.
Hopefully for another 28.
Why did my sarcasm meter just beep right there? Alright. Moving along to item number seven. Joe Devine is going to handle this, this was done at the request of myself, with the defeat of the downtown mask ordinance last week. We felt that it would still be prudent to reach out and be proactive and encourage everybody to do some masks, uh, as they approach the downtown districts of Georgia.
So as Chairman Blomack stated, um, per his request, I reached out to a sign company, um, to see about putting some downtown signage, uh, just reminding people about the importance of mask use. Um, so we came up with a design, and basically says, "Welcome to Henneker," with a mask on it. This is, uh, "Stay safe to stay open, mask on, wash up, spread out behind." Um, there's a couple different color designs, we stick a red and a blue just for the points. Um, I believe in speaking to the chairman, um, again, his, a big piece of this is education, making sure people are aware of the importance of mask use, um, and so that's kind of the reason we came forward with this downtown signage. Um, the, the finances behind it, um, an 18 by 12 sign is $42, a 24 by 18 inch sign is $59, and an A-frame signs would be $220, given the cost.
Great, thank you. And to clear up a misconception, this was not done at the request of New England College, this was done at the request of my son. It has, uh, really nothing to do with New England College, this is myself, not New England. Uh, well, let me, we'll deliberate amongst the board, and then we'll open it up to the public. This is just for the signs, this is not the resolution which is iteming. Discussion from the board?
Question, uh, did you have any idea how many signs you would, you would have, and how many, and where they would be?
There would be approaching the downtown district from the northeast, south, and west, and I believe there was a total of four signs. Correct, Joe? And I asked Joe to come up with some artwork and, uh, two color schemes. Leon? How do you propose to display these? Uh, the proposal was to put them on, uh, like, speed limit signs, or, uh, some of the, like, no parking signs, and just attach them to that. They're the same dimensions as those signs.
I have spoken to the road agent who said he'd be able to hang the signs without any issue.
Further questions from the board? Okay, uh, so, it's not really a public hearing, but we did make a motion that we would allow public hearings. So if there's any members of the audience that wish to come on up, please state your name for the recording secretary, Kelly. And, uh, please keep your comments brief, and if you can, under a minute, we have a long agenda tonight.
Yep, just real quick, um, my name's Kathleen Labonte, here, I live here in Henneker, um, and. Turn it off? It's on. I don't need it cleaned, I'm fine, I'm good, I'm not, I don't want it cleaned. You can clean it after me for the next question. Alright, so, um, I'm, I'm not in agreement with these signs, because we haven't even come to, you know, a real, a, a, a formal thing of what we're gonna, what you think is gonna happen here in Henneker with, uh, the masking of people. So this is to me, uh, money that we don't need to spend right now, and, and, and based on the college, uh, push for you to join them, it seems to me that if they want signs around for their college students, then they should make, get these signs made up.
It was not done at the request of the college.
I'm saying, if this, if they, if these, if the college is, is interested in partnering with Henneker, and they're trying to get, uh, the, the students to know this or know that, they need to make up these signs and put them on the college campus. I really don't want my tax dollars spent for something that I'm not in agreement with in the first place. And you have not, we, the board has not even had a, a, we have not had an opportunity to discuss the letter from the college and the resolution that, uh, Tia and some people made up, which I'm hoping to find out who. So that's my.
The resolution is iteming, thank you.
Item, the resolution what?
Is item eight.
Right, so that's my.
This is just a friendly reminder sign in the base, in the downtown district. Further questions? Joe, can you answer her question, what the total cash outlay for these four signs was?
If we went with the 24 by 18, it's $60 per sign, so $240.
Thank you.
Jennifer McFarlane.
So we're gonna ask, as a moment of hygiene, to turn the microphone off before you clean it, going forward, please.
Sorry about that.
We still love you, Jen.
Um, somebody's gonna be the first one to do it. Um, so, about the size, is that if the college wasn't opening up with all of these new people coming into town, and so the mask ordinance wouldn't have been put forward because it wasn't put forward until we had this influx of NAC students, would you have looked to put these signs up?
If I can answer that, it was a pragmatic approach to a motion that failed last week, to try and find middle ground, to try and educate as many folks as possible in the downtown area, that if they, it's just a, it's just a friendly reminder. It's not, it's not an enforcement issue, it's not a mandate, it's just kinda, hey, you're coming into the downtown. Just, if you can, please wear it, so.
So I would assume that you're gonna be placing these where there are sidewalks?
Uh, yes, I would, I would, except for maybe the south may not have a sidewalk approach.
The concern I have is that to protect the town against liability, the signs need to be placed high enough. If you put it on a speed limit sign, or a yield sign, or anything like that, they'll be down lower, where if you look at the state and federal guidelines for placing it on heights, they have to be high enough so that people won't walk into them on the sidewalks. So that would mean a separate post.
We don't plan on doing additional posts, we will find, there are plenty of signs. I mean, I've, I identified probably six to eight signs in each direction coming into the downtown. Whether or not they were all clear of sidewalks, I can't answer that, but I'm sure our Highway Department would, if the motion passes to, I'm sure they would do the right thing.
I just think that, um, everything that's been happening over the past four months, five months, that we've seen Henneker really come together and be very, very respectful, and wearing masks, and asked to not being told.
This is, this is not telling.
I know, I realize.
This is a big difference, this is a.
But you're putting it in your face.
What's that?
You're putting it in the face. And we've had long discussions here at this like board about more signs in town. Do we really want more signs in town? I think the majority of people in town, if you go to the Harvester, if you go to Edmunds, 90, 95% of those people wear masks, and the ones not wearing masks stay more than six feet away from you. And I just think that we don't need these reminders, we're not children, we understand that COVID is a serious thing.
Thank you. Further questions?
Thank you, Kathleen Labonte, this is my last comment on, on this matter. So just two days ago, the CDC came out with an article, and they finally told the truth. Just 6% of COVID deaths occurred without COVID morbidities. And they said it down here, the CD is saying that to treat COVID is to treat it just like any other illness. Stay home if you're sick, you're probably gonna be fine. And that for most people, COVID is just a mild illness, it's a respiratory cold that you can take care of at home. If however you get sick enough to need treatment, go seek your own treatment to your own doctors. So we are, we are spending the money on something that the CDC.
So we are, we are spending the money on something that the CDC, and I will be sending this to you, to all of us board members, I will be sending this article to all of you, that it's just 6%. They've made, they have, they have really pulled way back and they've made a lot of mistakes and they have a chart in there of what people died from and it was not COVID.
Kathleen, can you please state the source of that article, please?
CDC.
Well, the CDC.
No, no. What, what website are you reading it from?
I'm reading it, I'm, I'm reading it from Outkick.com, but, no, no, excuse me. They have embedded in here the article, the CDC report, and it's, they're quoting exactly the CDC report. So no, no laugh, Tia. That's ridiculous.
I wasn't laughing, Kathleen.
She, they quoted the CDC and embedded in this article, which I'm going to send to you, is the CDC report.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else for this? Please state your name.
Carol Dennis. I agree with Kathleen in one thing. I think in a way we're putting the cart before the horse. We haven't really addressed the whole issue, but back to the sign issue. We have not been here yet a year. We came from New York State and there are so many signs already to add more signs. I don't think people are gonna really read them. They're gonna be just something that is, if you're driving, you're not even gonna look. If this is that important and if after the next discussion and the vote comes through and it is decided we need masks, just put a huge banner up in the four corners and one sign saying masks and, and be done with it. But truly to spend a lot of money on a mask or a sign here, a sign there, no one is gonna read them. Thank you.
Just for a point of clarification, it's $240. Okay. Before we go to Zoom, anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Don't forget to state your name for the record.
Sure. This is Wayne. I live on Hillside, Highland, excuse me, up here in Henneker. I, I just spoke to President Perkins. New England College would be happy to reimburse the town the cost of all of the signs.
I, I didn't hear what you said, Wayne. Could you actually repeat that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. New England College would be happy to reimburse the town for the cost of the signs. There'll be no taxpayer dollars need to be spent.
Thank you very much. Did you have any other comments, Wayne?
Just to say that I'm in support of the signage. I saw the mock-up that was just shared. They looked good to me. I appreciate the select board taking this action. Certainly it remains voluntary for folks to do it. My experience has been different than what has been described. Going to, going to the, the stores in town, I certainly don't see a 95% mask rate, and I think this would be very helpful for our students that are around town, that live off campus, to see that the town is, is reminding them of their obligation. So I, I think this would be a good thing. We're supportive and we're willing to put our, our mouth where, our money where our mouth is.
Thank you very much. Tia, is there anybody else from Zoom? Not seeing any, anybody else for further public commentary regarding this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Mike French. I just want to state briefly that I appreciate your sentiment and the motion and I support the signage. I think it would be a helpful and useful information tool and help set a nice standard that says that to everyone entering the town, that the town cares and recognizes the value of wearing masks in public places. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please vote in favor of this motion.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else for the podium. I'll shut. Cut off after the microphone, please.
Are we done with the signage?
Yes. So not hearing any other public commentary, the board will go back to deliberations. And since I'm a sponsor of this, I will make a motion to approve the four signs to be installed and to accept the New England College offer to pay for the signs and to instruct the highway department to install them once they are produced. Is there a second to that motion? Motion made by Chris, seconded by Leon. Further discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to say I think it's a great idea. I think it's gonna be very noticeable, there's new signs and bright colors. So I'm glad that we're making this effort.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Ready to call the vote? All those in favor? Motion passes five nothing. Thank you. Okay. Item number eight is a resolution for the mask and face covering, and I believe Tia and Scott are gonna point on this. Tia, order.
So this came about after a non-public, public discussion and a draft, original draft was sent to the entire board, which looked a lot different than this one. Scott, myself, Joe, and other, others, you know, discussed it. The three of us ended up coming together and coming up with this draft resolution, which is a good faith effort to encourage the Henneker community to wear the face covering when inside a building or whenever outside and social distancing of at least six feet cannot be maintained. And this will assist in reducing the risk and spread of the COVID-19 virus. We have included in the resolution, there are the RFAs which give us the authority to guide over this. We do have three edits. Correct, Scott? One being in section one, taking out the word required and saying it is essential. Two, to remove the word shall and just go to applies. And three, removing the word shall and go to will apply. So we, we have three edits to the resolution that has been put in front of the board. The one in paragraph one, number one, changing the word requires to essential. Two, changing the word shall to, and just go to the resolution applies. And three, the requirements will apply to, and then continue with the paragraph.
What, what is your question? It's quite long. Are there copies on the back? I have a tablet you can look at. You wanna read it on the tablet?
That's okay. I can see the gist of it.
Those are fine.
Yeah, what, is there, what's the enforcement? There, there is no enforcement. The original draft that we had considered put an enforcement mechanism of having our police department enforce it or other mechanisms, we have completely removed the enforcement piece. Once again, this is a good faith effort, you know, to encourage the community to wear the mask whenever inside the building or when six feet cannot be maintained.
Okay, hang on. We're not gonna start from the public there. You'll have a chance to talk. I just, I gotta reel it back in since we've kinda got off track there. So are you done with your presentation?
No, yeah, I'd like to continue on too. As Tia mentioned, this, you know, this is a good faith effort to encourage the Henneker community, the entire community. It also mentions three RFAs down there, which give authorization to the select board to manage the affairs. And this includes the, the health, the health officers that we have and the police department that we have and all the citizens that we have and all the businesses that we have. And we can assure you that every, every one of those folks has looked towards having a tool that people can look to, to see on how this community is trying to take care of itself. And this resolution will do just that. And let's also remember that this has eight lines of, of items in it, and only three or four of these are resolutions that this town has put into it. The rest all come from the state.
Right. And, and many people have continued to focus on New England College. There are other businesses that bring in large amounts of people outside of our community, including the ski area, which is located here. And this resolution would show that the Board of Select supports the wearing of masks and is trying to make a good faith effort to protect our community.
Okay. Very good. Questions from the board before we open it up to the public? We have Peter and then Leon.
I just have one question before we get into a further discussion. I'd like to ask if the police chief, fire chief, and health officer slash rescue chief have given any input on this document?
Well, we, Joe received a text message and I believe you know the answer to that. So Joe, would you like to read the text message?
Sure. So this chief is, this message is from Chief French, and he just basically stated, "The three chiefs do not support the mask resolution. We did notify Blomback, Flynn, and Park."
And no reason was given.
The, well, the reason that was, the small reason was some of the verbiage of requires was what the chief did.
Which we removed.
So that was, that was the verbiage that the chief had given me, that he didn't like.
Okay, Peter?
And by the way, when I ask a question and I know the answer, I ask it for a reason. As Kathleen said, she didn't know the answer, and I'm sure some other people out there didn't know the answer. And I think it's non-important for the public to know that answer. Yes, I did know it, and I didn't ask for it, by the way. It was volunteered to me by all three of those individuals.
We are. Thank you, Matt Scott, you please.
Scott, I was having trouble. You, I was having a better time hearing you than I have before, but your statement that we're only adding three things that are town-related and the rest of the eight are state requirements, is that one, two, three are what we're adding and from four to eight are current requirements of the state?
So there, so if you look down through Leon, so you have one, two, three, four, five, and then some of the other requirements that have been put in here are CDC recommended or even the state has recommended them or put them into their own areas.
Do the state requirements say that employees of all businesses must wear a face covering? Or is that our, our, that kind of language, is that our invention, you know, number five, must wear?
Yeah, if you, if you, number five, if you look at the item, so it's members of the public entering a business, including outdoor areas, that is similar to what other restaurants have had to do. On the government building would actually make it so the public entering this building or any of other, our other government buildings would be, you know, asked to be wearing a mask. Same thing with our polling location, which our town moderator has covered this evening as well. This puts it forth in writing. And it leaves the head of community school, which has already developed their own product protocol, along with the SAU24, who is overseeing those protocols, along with New England College, to determine what is, what they're going to be doing, because that can be looked differently, along with the state and federal authorities, who have also adopted different standards or perhaps different regulations for their facilities.
Does that answer your question, Leon? Further questions from the board before we open it up to the public? Okay, the board will close deliberations right now and we will open it up to the public. Please come on up to the podium. Please remember to state your name. And if you want to clean the microphone in between, to shut it off and wipe it down.
Before I shut with the documents here that I wanted to solve real quick, in the Washington Post, and I'll send it to you, all of you, the new Trump pandemic advisor pushes controversial herd immunity strategy. So in other words, he's, he's saying, the more we are together, because we're social people, the more we will get rid of this problem of any kind of virus that you think is out there. So herd immunity, natural herd immunity, and he's going, he's reporting on it and you'll probably get correspondence about it. So first, John, there was a court, Supreme Court opinion that just came out a few days ago, and so I'm gonna read the part that's crucial for you to understand here. The Constitution of New Hampshire, and the, wait, sorry. The legislature may not, in the exercise, even in the exercise of its absolute internal rulemaking authority, violate constitutional limitations. Indeed, no branch of state government can lawfully perform any act which violates the state constitution. Therefore, any legislative act violating the constitution or infringing on its provisions must be void, because the legislature, when it steps beyond its bounds, acts without authority. And then, part two, part one, Bill of Rights, Article 12, "The Constitution of New Hampshire and the laws of this state shall, which shall be made in pursuance thereof, shall be some of the laws of the land. Only by consent of the people may the powers of the government of the state of New Hampshire be amended or expanded by the means provided for by this constitution. Any legislative act, a local rule by any agency within this state that assumes powers not delegated by this constitution and direct violation of the amendment process is void." That's that part. Second part, I have a copy of Executive Emergency Order Number 65. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it or look at it. This one is an order authorizing assessments of civil penalties against businesses, organizations, entities, property owners, facility owners, organizations, and individuals who violate any emergency order, including this one. And it says here, number three, "Any business, organization, entity, property owner, facility owner, organization, or individual that recklessly violates any emergency order, rule, or regulation issued under the state of emergency shall be subject to civil penalties of up to $1,000 for each violation or day that a violation continues." I don't know what reckless means, because they left out some important verbiage there, what that means. Number five, "The Division of Public Health out of VHS, working through its staff or local health officials, shall take necessary enforcement actions for violations of the emergency orders." But they're not telling you, including civil penalties, they're not telling you what they are. And, but they do say later that the fine shall be $2,000 a day.
Kathleen, can you stay on topic?
I am on topic, because it's all about the mask.
This is really nothing, this is nothing to do with fines and anything like that.
Yes, because when, if you're putting an ordinance through, these are the fines.
It's not, there are no fines.
If you're putting regulations through, whatever you think you're putting through, these, these orders have, have to coincide with them. These, these executive orders.
I understand that.
So absolutely, anything you're putting through to this community regarding masks are outlined in. are outlined in here, are outlined, so please let me finish.
Correct, but just stay on task, because we've got a lot of people that want to speak behind you, and you're talking about fines.
You are just, you know, I had a flow. And you know what? When I'm in a flow and you do that, you stop the flow of conversation so that it gets disjointed, so that the public that I'm trying to talk to and the public out there that I'm trying to talk to do not understand what I'm trying to make. So, please, I ask you, this is a discussion, but we have at least five minutes.
Kathleen, you're talking about fines.
No, I am talking about the fines that come along when you don't, they're a mess.
There are no fines proposed.
I am reading the executive order to you that Sununu signed, okay?
We are not here to debate Sununu's mask, whatever. We are here to debate.
I am going to continue with this, if you would just give me a second to make the points that I'm trying to make.
Kathleen, wrap it up quickly, please.
So, under this, under failure to comply with what you are trying to suggest could happen with this community, it will lead to also criminal charges. So, thank you, I only had to finish that part. So, then, onto your thing that you wrote here. Who did write this? Who, Joe and Tia, and who else put all of this together?
Scott.
And Scott. Nobody else?
No, this draft is what we came up with after, you know, discussion.
All right, so, it says here, Tia, under your thing, you're calling it a resolution.
It is a resolution.
Pardon?
It is a resolution, Kathleen.
Under your thing, it says it's a resolution. Under the article, under the town letter, under the letter you got from the college, she's calling it the proposed ordinance.
We had originally discussed an ordinance at the last meeting, Kathleen, of potentially moving forward with that. Well, Kathleen, let me finish. There was a potential ordinance that was drafted. There were three members on the board who had concerns over it. Instead of going forward with an ordinance, right? We created a resolution, trying to incorporate everything, all the feedback that we'd already gotten, even from the public, to try to make this work for the community. That's fine. Her letter is dated August 28th. Your resolution is dated August 28th, so how would I know that? All right. Anyway, number 3, these ordinance, or whatever you're saying, I've already gone over why they're not a law. By the way, so Plymouth, Plymouth is doing the same thing with, working with the college. And they have, they have an actual chief of police for the college, they call it, he calls it the chief of police. And he says that he has authority over your local police. We don't want that here. And I don't know if the college is, but my point is, is that she's saying in this letter, "Our students who fail to comply with NEC's mask requirements will be dismissed from campus and sent home." Who is going to do that? So, you know what, Kathleen? New England College has adopted their own rules for students that are living within their boundaries of their campus, right?
This is a letter to the Select Board.
Correct, Kathleen, if you've watched our Zoom meetings, which we've had, what, five of them?
Doesn't matter what I've watched.
Kathleen, do not interrupt me, do not interrupt me. We've had numerous conversations with the college. There's also a document online that you can actually go and read, which New England College is available on our website. New England College has discussed it.
I'm staying on task with the letter that was in the packet that you were talking about this board meeting. I am staying on task with the letter from the college, and that's what I want to stay on task about.
Kathleen, wrap it up.
I am talking to you about the letter that's in your packet.
You won't be talking to anybody if you don't.
I am talking to the board about the letter that's in the packet.
I am trying to explain that letter in the packet based on the issue that you are continuing to interrupt me.
So, she says, "Failing to comply with NEC's mask requirements will be dismissed from campus and sent home." And I just want to know who they will get for that. And last but not least, we, well, I talked about that. So, then, we get to your thing. And after discussion in non-public, why would you talk about this in non-public? Why couldn't this have been a public meeting? Why couldn't we have sat and listened to all your events about this?
Kathleen, we had another item that popped up in a non-public conversation, right? And this was also briefly discussed, so...
It says, "After discussion in non-public," this is, you did put this together, so I'm just begging to say, but I think you went into non-public about something that should have been open to the public.
Kathleen, this is not what was drafted that came out of that non-public, so...
Anything else?
All right, so I think, oh, all right, so you quoted RSA in your thing, you quoted RSA 147:1, specifically authorizes town to make regulations for the prevention and removal of nuisances. Are you going to remove me? Am I going to be a nuisance, because I'm not wearing your masks? And I'm not going to social distance? And I'm not going to be tested for fevers or any of that? So, what's the nuisance? Can you define nuisance? And how are you going to remove the nuisance?
Kathleen, there is no enforcement mechanism within this resolution, as we've explained how many times now. These RSAs have been put in there to explain to the public what authority the board has. It states in the last paragraph, however, that the resolution, you know, would be going to effect immediately, adopted by the board, and unless it's replaced by an ordinance, which would impose fines. So, guess what? You don't have to worry about it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up, please. Again, on the hygiene on the microphone, there are wipes at the base of the podium there, and if you do want to wipe it down, please shut it off before...
Sorry, I started that, but I will, this should be a lot easier.
Please again, state your name.
I'm sorry, Jim, that is Henneker. I think if one takes a trip around Henneker, because it doesn't take long, you will find that most of the businesses here, I mean, you can go to Avenue, you can go to the Harbors or you can go to any number of different places, restaurants, whatever. They all have a sign out front that says, "Mask either," some nomenclature, "mask should be worn, mask have to be worn, recommend masks be worn," something, okay? My point is this, I've listened to a lot of sausage being made, okay? We're talking about mincemeat words, we're talking about changing this to this and whatever, whatever. Maybe that's all valid at some point, okay? I think the bottom line is, the merchants in this little tiny town of Henneker have figured it out. I think they have figured out that they can control what they allow in their businesses, okay? So, I'll cut it off. Clear and simple, please, don't create something that's unenforceable, that nobody gives a crap about and doesn't even see the signs that you're going to put up. Just let the merchants do their thing. They've done it, they've done a great job, and let them continue. But don't push down our throat something that a lot of people in this town don't want. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who is next? Welcome, Barbara French.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you.
We can just barely see you.
For the record, my name is Barbara C. French. I live on 81 Fairview Avenue in Henneker. I am here to support the mandatory wearing of face masks. For example, we saw what happened out West when they were pressured to open up. Economic prosperity is important, but the way it was done was not appropriate. As a health professional and retired school nurse, I feel I must speak. I am a retired school nurse of 27 years and a retired state representative of 20 years. At Runway Junior High School in Concord, I was responsible for 1,000 students plus staff each year and was the only health decision maker and needed to make the right decisions. School nursing was a great opportunity, but also a huge responsibility. We're helping the students get the most out of their education, but also develop a healthy lifestyle. I am also a retired state representative. I sat on the Health and Human Services and Elderly Affairs Committee. An issue you are familiar with, immunization, and the process they go through are all dealt with in that committee. I was directly responsible for Henneker and Bradford and actually the whole state, over a million people. The legislature was an awesome opportunity, but also a huge responsibility. I believe in working for the common good. Since we know wearing face mask prevents COVID-19, and that can have a serious, okay, COVID-19 can have serious health consequences, including death, making the wearing of face masks mandatory is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is my favorite neighbor. Come on up, Jean.
I thought you'd say more. I'm sorry. I was just... My name is Jean Darden. I am a mother, a nurse, and a citizen of Henneker. And I am here with my mask because I care. I care about all of you, and I know that the people in this room, I know most of you, I know that you care. I know that you care about me, and I know you care about the community. I am here to speak in favor of an ordinance to require masks, mainly because...
Just a point of clarification, this is a resolution, not an ordinance.
Thank you. Resolution. Or my wish, that everyone will wear a mask. I work in a facility where we have had a COVID scare. We were exposed to the virus. Fortunately, after quarantine and testing, we escaped becoming ill, and most of my patients are well. During crises such as this, people come together. After 9/11, we saw people coming together, supporting each other, being kind to each other. And during my personal crisis, this town supported me. You all came together for me and for my family. I wear the mask for you, and I'm asking that you wear a mask for me and for my family and for my friends. If I'm wrong, you have been slightly inconvenienced, maybe your makeup got messed up or your mustache or whatever. But if you're wrong, those of you who oppose this, then we may be in trouble. Right now, the only weapons we have are masks, distancing, and wash your hands over and over again. Please help us to help each other, to stay safe and well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. I don't know who's next, Mr. Marko.
Hi, Bill Marko of Henneker. I'm not anti-mask by any means. I've worn it when I had to wear it when I couldn't socially distance. But I am anti-mandate. It's, the residents of Henneker have proven, we know how to handle this crisis at such a low rate. The only reason we're all talking about this is because the college kids came back, which makes it a college problem. But I am more about the facts than feel-good legislation. So, I have a couple of questions. One, what's the incremental reduction of COVID transmission from when someplace had voluntary compliance to mandated compliance? Does anybody have that kind of a number?
I have a whole report here, so hang on, I'll get you the answer.
Okay.
Well, she's researching that, you want to keep...
Yeah, what's your criteria for ending this order?
So, the criteria for ending the order is until it's no longer necessary or...
What's that criteria? That's what I'm asking.
So, that could, where it states right in the opening paragraph of the state of emergency, also until COVID-19 is no longer poses a threat to our community.
But that's, those are words, that doesn't tell me when, what are we going to look at a number? What's the number? Platinum curve, a certain percentage of...
Bill, this virus is changing rap, like, the statistics and data changes rapidly, right, based on exposure? We do have issues with asymptomatic exposure within that first time period when you don't have any sensors. We also have people that are coming into our community from other states. We've already seen it in wedding reception.
All those arguments, I'm asking, what criteria are you going to use to end it?
That is something that the board can determine.
It should be in this resolution.
It is there.
No, the criteria, the actual, the data that you're going to use to base this decision off of should be in here. Otherwise, it's just open-ended, it'll go on forever.
No, so this is a temporary, and it even says in there that it shall go into effect immediately, and then we will make a determination. This is not, and furthermore, this is not an ordinance, this is a resolution.
I didn't say ordinance, I didn't use the word "yeah."
Furthermore, this is a resolution, it's not an ordinance, right? There's no enforcement mechanism. It could be six months.
I understand, I understand that you're going through a lot of...
We're also coming up to flu season, Bill, and the situation might change. Just because we have low numbers now doesn't mean that the numbers can't increase.
So, you can't answer the question? Can you answer the question about the difference in compliance versus voluntary?
This is a resolution stating that the board, right, supports the mask. Are we requiring you to wear a mask?
We all support masks. Well, not all, I can't say that for everyone.
Can't say that.
A lot of us do, okay? We understand that mask-wearing in certain situations, I understand that it's beneficial. But you're going, you're a governing body, you're not a private entity. A college can make that, a company can make that stipulation on their employees, they can all do that. You're a governing body, and you have a different standard to go by.
No, we're also given the authority under R 101, COVID-8.
What propagates this action should be facts. I'm not saying that mask-wearing is bad, I'm saying that for you to tell us to wear masks is not appropriate unless you get some data that says, "When you tell us to wear masks, COVID is reduced." When you tell us to wear masks, not when we wear masks. I understand that when we wear masks, COVID transmission is reduced. But for you to tell us that versus us voluntarily doing it, there's an important aspect to that.
The CDC has come out, right, and has strongly encouraged people to wear masks. It is also, numerous studies have been conducted. One of them was accepted on May 18th of 2020, where they actually started to, you know, they studied what happened between shutting down, between stay-at-home orders, and also when communities implemented masks community-wide. They also have studies, and I have it here, and I'm more than happy to email it to you, Bill, the difference between a community wearing masks, nobody wearing masks, and if one person wears a mask and others don't, and what that level of percentage and percentage of infection rate.
I understand that. I think you're missing my point in that, when government mandates it... When government mandates it versus people voluntarily complying, that's the incremental difference that I'm looking for to base, for lack of a better word, legislation on. So, all right, you, you don't have that information, and I, you know, I didn't expect that you probably would. This is, this was, this is what I call feel-good legislation. If you pass this, everybody's gonna walk out and go, oh, boy, finally, we got this, uh, we got this legis, this resolution. Most of people here, or a lot of people here want the ordinance, but think that we're not going there. So, to be clear about this being a resolution, if somebody does not comply, there's no action being taken against that citizen.
No, but at, at this time, it does stay in the resolution. At any time, the board could come back with an ordinance. But at the same time, it also, this resolution also supports, you know, our businesses who are trying to mandate the mask and who have residents go in and have refused to leave and not wear one.
That business can throw that person out. That's their private business. They, they can eject that person from the property. That's always been the case. You don't need this to, to help them. That doesn't help them. If they, if a business wants to have a hard, fast rule about wearing a mask, they can do that. People will either shop there or not. This doesn't change any of that.
However, if they do know that, if they do have to force someone to do that, then at least if this resolution is passed, they will know that they have the town's backing. They, they know they will have the select board's backing, and for the most part, the backing of anyone else that, that agrees with this resolution. It's a very powerful tool that can be used. And why not use this tool, especially when it is at one's own consideration?
What is the backing? How does that manifest itself?
Because they know what the select board stands for, they know what the police department stands for, the health officers, when that resolution is endowed to them for their use.
All right, hang on, wait, we're talking about...
I, I thought I heard earlier the police department did not support it.
They did not support with the words "required." We have ju, we have put already discussed that tonight.
All right, so they did.
And the police department does go along with what the select board wants them to do.
I would, all right, poor judgment, that's what I heard from the police department.
Bill, can we, uh, we've got a lot of people that wanna talk, so can we just wrap it up?
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, who's next, please? Again, remember, please state your name for the record. Again, if you need to clean the microphone or anything.
Hello, I'm Jay Noon. Today, we have empirical evidence that the WHO, Dr. Fauci, and Dr. Bricks were all wrong. The CDC silently updated their numbers this week to show that only 6% of all coronavirus deaths were completely due to coronavirus alone. And of course, you won't find this on Fox, or CNN, or, or, uh, any of these other news networks that are funded by Big Pharma. The rest of the deaths are pinned to the coronavirus, are attributed to individuals who've had other serious issues going on. Also, most of the deaths are very old Americans with co-morbidities. 6% of 154,000 is roughly 9,200 deaths, and the U.S. population is probably 328 million. That is a mortality rate of .000038. That's four zeros followed by a 38. Dr. Tony Fauci and Dr. Deborah Bricks used the Imperial College model to persuade President Trump to lock down the country and to scare all of the people, also with tools like social media that Google, for decades now, has been learning how to scare the cheapest out of everybody on all your social media platforms, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, you can like...
Jay, can we restrict the comments down to the, the resolution as they proposed here?
So anyways, this fraudulent model, the college model, Imperial College model predicted 2.2 million. I have here a CDC link on this paper. To read it off to you would be a little ridiculous, but I'd be happy to leave this with you, and you could look it up yourselves. And it says, Table 3, this is direct from the CDC website. Table 3 shows types of health conditions that are contributing causes mentioned in conjunction with deaths involving coronavirus disease for 6% of deaths. This is from the CDC website. And that is 6%, where COVID-19 was the only cause mentioned. For deaths with conditions or causes in addition to COVID-19, on average, there were 2.6 additional conditions or causes per death. The number of deaths with each condition or cause is shown for all deaths by age groups. There is politicians, there is investors, and others who are taking advantage of this crisis and building a political, and build, and building their political careers on this crisis. Let's face it, at this moment in time, anyone who is pushing for more lockdowns, mask mandates, and other abuses on our personal rights is either evil or terribly misinformed. And I'm hoping that the people who support this are just misinformed. That being said, I have a question. Well, as you can tell, I am against any ordinance, resolution, or mandate of anything. So you guys are saying that this is a resolution, and when I hear the word "resolution," I think of two things. I think of, well, this is like the camel's nose under the tent because, you know, what you'll do is quietly at some other meeting when no one else is paying attention, bring this up again, as this is what the gun grabbers have done for years. This is what the environmentalists have done to strip people of their rights for years. It's like the boiling, the frog-in-water effect is turning to heat up a little bit. The frog doesn't notice. The people are distracted by the massive entertainment addiction going on, and they're not paying attention to what their public servants are doing. They even call them leaders. There shouldn't be leaders in government. There should only be servants in government. Anyways, when you say there's no enforcement, I mean, this sounds like it's a plan to bring out enforcement. And, uh, you know, then you have, you know, I guess a discussion would stop here if I was to, you know, mention that, you know, the police got better things to do than to go bothering people about masks. There's gonna be massive looting everywhere when people go hungry because 55 million people are at work. And this is a total waste of the resources of the town and of the people even be discussing this. 6% of the original numbers is what they are sending. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, please?
Jennifer McCourt. I just want everybody to notice that when we're not speaking and we're quiet and not spewing germs all over the place, our masks are on. And then when we are talking and spewing water and germs all over the place, they are off.
Is that a motion to adjourn?
Um, again, I, I appreciate that, you know, 1, 2, and 3, you've taken out the requires, musts, and shalls, but 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, you have not. And from a standpoint of putting a must in there, what is the enforcement behind that must or shall? Um, my other concern, my question, and I really would ask you to, and number one, make sure you exclude the neck gaiters, because again, they are worse than wearing nothing. And that was a study done by Duke University. That's based on science and fact. And I guess my question is, is that does this all pertain to the fire department and the police department when they're working in an emergency?
Um, I believe our police department and our fire department, if, especially since we're keeping track of this, and tell me if I'm wrong, Joe, they're being asked to wear masks, especially when they cannot social distance, or if they're interacting with members of the public.
Oh, somebody forgot to tell them. And I know that from talking to members of both. And, wow, I'm trying to remember what they wrote in there. Sorry, I should have written it down.
You can come back. Can you take your ass off?
Oh, yeah, just to answer your question about the, uh, the change that we've done to the first three, but not some of the others. It was my understanding that that was part of Governor Sununu's emergency notices. I may have stink correct on that. But, um, that was the reasoning that we didn't do much to try to modify the language in those four.
Having read thread through those and the CDC's, it did not say must or shall. It said recommended. And that was his entire order, was his recommendation. And, you know, personally, I just feel this is a feel-good order. It's gonna go into the books online or whatever, and, I mean, it has no teeth, so whatever, if you guys wanna do it, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that, um, the musts and shalls are taken out of it and the neck gaiters put in as not being a suitable face covering. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please, again, if you wanna wipe down the microphone. Just make sure you hit off first. And again, please state your name for the record so that Recording Secretary Kelly can get your name.
Yeah, James Parker, Henneker. At this point in the pandemic, since we've learned so much more than what we knew back in February, this is a move in the wrong direction. The transmissibility of this CCP virus is much less than what we thought it was back in February. And the fatality rate is also much, much lower than what we were anticipating back then. So some of the public health measures that were taken are, were understandable then because we just didn't know. But based on what we know now, we should be backing off. We should be going in the other direction, opening up our town, our economy. Comment about the ski area, masks introduce their own problems. They restrict breathing, for example. They steam one's glasses. Can you imagine someone skiing and being all huffing and puffing, and then putting on a mask and restricting their breathing? That's not healthy. So I just think this is a step in the wrong direction. That's all.
Thank you very much. And just as a point of clarification, at Pat's Peak, masks are required.
Hi, Carol Dennis. I would like to sort of build upon what was just said by the last gentleman. I look around and I see all sorts of different types of masks. And I don't think any of us here have the same size nose or anything. But there has been medical studies proven that a cloth mask that does not hold in around your nose is useless. In fact, it's detrimental to you. So if you're going to pass some sort of a resolution or an ordinance, you might as well get into it and tell them what type of masks they have to wear. Because otherwise, you're promoting ill health because there has been no proven case that masks help. Now, the ones that are the medical ones, they have a lot more, but now we can't use those because those are left to the medical professionals. So now, we are supposed to get the ones that dear people in our communities are making, they're, you know, they're doing wonderful things for everybody. But in fact, are they... Does your cloth mask hold in? I've got one that just goes across, and there's all sorts of space coming down there. So be careful at what kind of resolution you're going to pass because you might be just promoting, people are gonna be wearing those bandanas. They have said they do nothing. If you just say masks, people are going to be doing that. I am in that danger zone of an age, and I am totally against any resolution of mandatory masks. Thank you.
Joan O'Connor. I'm in favor of the resolution. This isn't forever. Let's just get through this winter. I read a good article in Yankee Magazine this month. If you happen to be sitting in the doctor's office or something, I highly recommend you read it. It's entitled "Fighting for Survival: When Small New England Colleges Fail, the Towns They Call Home Share the Pain." I went to New England College, and I'm not crazy about some of their actions that they've been doing over the years, environmental type of stuff. But at this point, I, they've made a big effort. And if the COVID numbers go up in Henneker and the college has to shut down, it might be a major hardship for that college. And I think we just need to work together as a town, as a community, with the college. They're doing a really good job with their pilgrim promise, pilgrim pledge, whatever it is. And I think this town could just do a little bit more, too. I mean, the selectmen, I, thank you. I think there's some, I mean, half the people in this room are not wearing masks right now. So don't say that people are wearing them. You know, there's a lot of violations just in this room. And I spoke to the guy at the pharmacy. He said they've got a sign on their door saying masks are required. And he said, you wouldn't believe the number of people that come in here without a mask on, and he, they can't say anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we will, we understand that there are a couple people on Zoom that wish to speak. We will get to them momentarily. Please, can you state your name for the record?
Hello, Shaolin Noon, Henneker. I am a massage therapist, so I'm holistically health-minded. And I'm seeing these masks, we're seeing people getting infections on their mouths, people with respiratory issues have real issues, people with emotional issues, traumas. A lot of reasons why people cannot wear masks. Like other people have said, they don't do anything. I've actually seen Fauci say, they're more so that you feel like you're doing something. So for us to mandate something which is a slippery slope, which can turn into an ordinance, which can turn into fines and police officers needing to enforce this, I say no to a mandate. Also, it seems that this would maybe be on town employees, that they would have to because it's a town mandate. And this is a detriment to their job. This is gonna hinder what they're doing. People can trip and injure themselves and also become more ill. It's bad for the health of the wearer, and it's not doing anything about COVID, which, as we've seen, has been, the numbers have been amped up. So I, I just, please, don't bring mandates down about ridiculous things or anything. Thank you.
Mike French, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I strongly believe that wearing facial coverings in public in downtown Henneker will be critical to protect the health and welfare of all people, businesses, and schools, including New England College. So I do support the proposed resolution. It is my pleasure and honor to wear a face mask, covering, when I am with people but can't stay at least, at least six feet away from them. Because I care about them and me, I wear the covering. We are all in this together, even the naysayers. I wish that the resolution was an ordinance and required mandated wearing masks, facial coverings downtown. I believe there is a linear relationship in, in the health benefits that accrue with the amount of people wearing masks. In other words, the more people wear masks, the better off we all are. And so, a mandate, and I, I understand that this, this resolution doesn't have a mandate, but I would say briefly that a mandate would increase the, the wearing of masks and would lead to increased health in town. I, I say, let's help all our friends at NEC by adopting this resolution. I am so pleased to read President Perkins' statements urging the select board to adopt an ordinance or a resolution. Doing so could mean the difference between their continuing to stay open for in-person classes and activities, or needing to close and send students home. Listening to the, some of the comments tonight, you'd almost think that the United States is not, is a, a nation completely separate from the rest of the world. That, that other countries haven't had experiences with COVID-19 and haven't learned a thing about how to cope with it. And in, in my opinion, our country has done horribly in response to this. Other countries have done much better. So the, and one of the key components to increasing and improving health outcomes is the wearing of masks. It's been demonstrated worldwide in... And so I urge the Select Board members to adopt this resolution now, at the very least. Better yet, work to adopt a full-fledged emergency ordinance with enforcement mechanisms as soon as possible. In your roles to protect the health and welfare of our community, you will almost certainly never take more important action, nor will your responsibility ever be greater. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any... Oh, and remember...
Jennifer O'Connor, again. I guess I would also respectfully request that you put a sunset on this resolution of like three or six months. And you can always revisit it and extend it again. But I think that would help to see if it is doing anything. And, you know, about the United States doing horribly, yes, they are. But that's a completely different matter because other countries that are doing very well, it's because they mandate that you actually... The people coming into their countries are actually traced. They have to put an app on their phone and they have to be tested daily for fever and whatnot. It's a completely different system that, of course, the United States would never do because of our constitutional rights. So that's a completely different subject. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, I would like to entertain some of the Zoom commentary. So either Tia or Joe, would you facilitate that for the board and the general public? Kim Jackson, you had asked to speak. You are going to be unmuted right now.
Thank you. I'm Kim Jackson. I've been in Hennecker for almost 17 years now. I am a high-risk population. Given my weight, given my blood pressure, my asthma, my sinus issues. After having seven sinus surgeries, I still can't breathe through my nose half the time. Because of those, I can't wear a mask. Two weeks ago, I was shamed into wearing a mask in Hennecker and had a full blown panic attack before. It's not like... I'm a victim of trauma. And by instituting this resolution, as you call it, it's just opening the door for a full-blown ordinance and public shaming. By adding signage to town, again, it's only putting it out there for anybody who's not wearing a mask to be shamed and made an outcast, unable to leave their home. So I am firmly against this ordinance. I don't believe the masks really help. I've watched each and every one of you touch the inside and the outside of your mask as you take it up and down. You're only cross-contaminating everything around you. It gives a false sense of security. It... Then contaminates everything that's in the grocery store that now I'm picking up and now I'm touching. And then I'm bringing home. And as has been said many times, it's a feel-good sort of thing to give everybody who's pro-mask and wearing their masks, you know, as they've been told to, that, you know, they're getting a win. And by passing this resolution, it's just going to push for an ordinance that's going to be done behind closed doors and then have to be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you very much. She was against the... The resolution. Hang on. Yeah. Who's next, please? Dr. Les Burns, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. I am in support of the resolution. I'm in support of the resolution because I have followed the science very closely. 172 independent studies, 172 independent studies conducted by research universities, by major medical organizations we've all heard of, are all confirming that masks help to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Some masks, as high as a 79% reduction of the spread of COVID-19. Regular cloth masks, when properly worn, about a 35% help in the prevention of the spread of COVID-19. This isn't a partisan issue. This doesn't make you a Republican or a Democrat because you take a position on masks. It ought not to be, anyway. It ought not to be about politics. It ought to be about public health. That's really the only thing that matters here. I've heard several people refer to this as a college problem. And certainly, the college takes very seriously its responsibility with our students. But as Tia noted, we have an awful lot of students that live in town. 150, about 150 of our students live off-campus in private apartments that they have rented from landlords, private homes, that sort of thing. It's 150 students that shop in all the stores that we shop in, that walk the streets we walk on, play on our athletic fields, interact with all of us on a regular basis. And while we certainly are pressing them to make sure they wear their masks and holding them accountable when they don't, punishing somebody for doing this after the fact isn't all that great because they've already done the deed. They've already done it. They've already been out and about without their masks. We have hundreds of other students that live on our campus that eventually will be able to go out and go to the restaurants, frequent our businesses, shop, play, do all of the things that college kids have been doing for years in Hennecker, in the downtown area and beyond. A mask ordinance would have been great, but that's not what this is. This is a resolution. And so I agree with Bill Marco. I think he's absolutely right. This is feel-good legislation. But what's wrong with that? What's wrong with the town saying, "Hey, if you can do it, wear a mask. If you don't do it, we're not going to ask the police to come after you. Nobody's writing you a summons." There's no enforcement mechanism to this. There's no punishment. There's no fine. We're asking folks to do the right thing, to do what those 172 independent studies confirm for us, that masks help prevent the spread. The language around or the focus on the fact that people with comorbidities are the ones most at risk is absolutely true. But what are we saying? Are we saying that we don't really care about those folks? Hey, if you're fit and healthy, you don't have much to worry about. So you don't have to worry about a mask. But if you're not, too bad, too bad to be you. We're not really interested in helping you out. That is not who we are. That shouldn't be who we are. And so I absolutely support this resolution. I appreciate the time that you all have taken in putting it together. And I hope and I urge its passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Any other Zoom comments?
I have nobody else on Zoom right now.
All right. Want to retain any more public comments? Don't forget to please state your name for the record.
Melody Holt, Hennecker. You just made the comment that there are so many studies proving the prevention that masks help. But there are so many studies by so many doctors actually speaking about how immunity is built by coming into contact with things and actually sanitizing and social distancing and covering our masks and faces and not exchanging germs is actually damaging to our immune system. And the fact that everyone keeps kind of saying that, "Oh, you know, there's proof, there's proof, there's science." There's so much other science that's just not even being talked about. And that goes to show, are you actually looking into alternative opinions? Or are you just going with the sway of what the major narrative is? That's it.
Thank you. Scott.
Heidi Okley Hennecker. I think it's just to reemphasize what we've all been told for the last twenty-four days. Everywhere you go, everywhere in the country. But that's not my question. How are you going to communicate this if you pass it to every person in town? That's going to need to be by mail or something. You have to rely on social media, but everybody uses it. It's a resolution for the town and we want everybody to be on board. And I think everybody should fairly be informed.
We have Lee Bossi from Messenger here. One more we need.
If you look in the resolution, it requires that the businesses also post.
That's happening.
Right? And I've spoken with Joe about also providing the businesses, which we could cover the signage so that people understand that they have to wear masks.
Where they should wear masks.
But if you say per resolution of the selectmen, I mean, if people have this... Because it's happening in the business of the venue. This is an offensive term to use. And I know businesses that ask people to leave on their own because I think these businesses have to follow state mandates to be open. And they have to follow them clearly or they will be closed. So this is just a reinforcement or re-encouragement of that. But I think most of the businesses are just to be open, the ones that were not necessary during the shutdown or they would be closed by the state.
Thank you.
Jennifer O'Connor, I just want to say that I just got a text message from a friend who's streaming this and they said that they couldn't hear the people on Zoom when they were speaking. The one who was crying, I understand, but we had a hard time hearing her. But the next person who spoke, they couldn't... Like a word here and there was really choppy.
Thank you. Okay. Any other members? Okay. Not seeing anybody on Zoom. We will close down public debate and we will bring it back to the Select Board level. So we've heard Tia and Scott's presentation. We've had lengthy input from the public regarding this issue. Members of the board, how do you feel? Leon Peter. I believe I've been consistent in my thought process through this entire thing. I believe education is far more effective than any sort of mandate. This is a step in the right direction, but I still have struggle with some of the verbiage.
And what verbiage is that, Chris?
You've addressed two of them. Employees of all businesses must wear face covering. That is over their mouth and nose when interacting with the public. It should be placed as far encouraged. And I believe the guidance is already provided for by the state on Section 4, Section 5.
Section 5? That... No?
Section 5, not what?
So if you look at the statement, you're saying that this was already covered under something else?
No, I'm saying Section 4, for the businesses to reopen, they receive guidance from the state. Section 5 is this board has not adopted the philosophy that you must wear a face covering for polling stations. And this is indicating that.
And it also says in there that it would be the town moderator's discretion to make the accommodations to ensure that those who do not wear one have the right to vote, which Cornell has outlined this evening.
Section 6 is already addressed by New Hampshire State Restaurant Guidelines. 7, I did not have a problem with. And... 8 is there is no requirement for a mask. It is highly suggested. So there's a lot of verbiage. I agree with a lot of sentiment that this is feel-good legislation. Personally, I don't care if it passes because there is no enforcement mechanism. But this is poor written policy, in my opinion. And I've been consistent in my thoughts about that I'm not requiring anybody to do anything. And I really believe that the better route is through education. So that's my two pennies on the... Peter.
Well, we've heard a lot of comments tonight and also at our last meeting. I had some issues with some of the wording, but I think my main issue, despite the wording, despite the amendments, the wording, I have not supported it from the get-go because I happen to live right in the center of town. And folks, as you know, I witnessed day in and day out and in evenings people utilizing a brand-new business across my house. They really require masks just to step up to their takeout window. They observe it on their own. They're doing a heck of a good job. People will take their ice cream and before they take the mask off, they wait until they get across the street and sit in the back. Well, it's fine. I see people walking, all of the students. I haven't seen one student yet with their mask off. They seem to be living up to that standard. It's actually a mandate at the school and that's their own prerogative. I see the farmer's market every Thursday. It's very rare I see somebody walk through there without a mask, including all the vendors. I see the concerts every Wednesday night. I see people playing there with their chairs under the ramp, most with masks on, if not all. They have organized that event to comply with a lot of these state mandates and they have people socially distant. They've marked it off and we have a fence around it where they can only go in certain areas. I think the town has done a wonderful job on their own voluntarily. I've seen, heard some pretty extreme information here tonight that I don't really go along with. But I'm not faulting anybody for that. That's what this is all about, to get everybody's opinion. But my reasons for not supporting this are not what I've heard from some of the negatives tonight, but for my own reasons, as I just expressed to you. Pros and cons. The people that have spoken in favor of it, they're all... They have all good points. But I don't know where they've been traveling these days because certainly going through downtown Hennecker, it has been so cooperative, it's just almost unbelievable. I think our sign ordinance or the new sign we approved will be a tickle that'll remind people. And I really don't think it's a crisis at this point. And I don't think it ever will be in this town. So I do not support anything pertaining to any kind of resolution or ordinance, and I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. Further commentary?
I made a fairly long presentation for the last Select Board meeting about how I feel on the subject. As I said then, I wear a mask just in case, regardless of all the arguments over the science and lack thereof and all the political crap that's developed over the subject of masks. I'm of an age and I have a destroyed immune system, so just in case it loses good, I wear a mask. And I wear them wherever anybody tells me to wear them. But I only do that when I'm around other people that I don't want to have get upset with me or I don't want to infect. We've come a long way since that draft that I so strongly objected to last time. But, and, you know, I said I wouldn't vote for an ordinance, make it a resolution. I said at the time, make it a page and a half. Reviewing this, you've come partway. But I'm persuaded by a lot of what I've heard here tonight and by my own experience that what we're talking about is waving a red flag to people who object to wearing masks. My observations around town are the same as Peter's. I think people... Well, first of all, I feel the college. It really ticks me off when I look, when somebody tells me to go read something on Facebook where rather than talking about the good job that the college is doing dealing with their students, they turn the discussions into an anti-college rant. I haven't got time for that. Don't tell me, read any of that crap. I think the college is doing an excellent job. I think they can do that job without our reinforcement. I think that those people who are agreeing with what we've been talking about tonight needing to wear masks are doing it. And I don't think that you're going to move a percentage of townspeople to change from being against masks by this. I think, like I said, all we're doing is waving a red flag on. So I'm not going to support it.
Thank you. I just want to emphasize one point. I am a firm believer in wearing a mask. I wear a mask everywhere I go. I believe in the science of wearing a mask. I believe... I believe that the wearing of the mask curtails the spread of COVID-19. I operate a business that requires masks for you to enter the facility. The main sticking point I have about this, this is all about process, and how do you get that? There are many ways in life up a mountain of problems. The trail that I prefer to go through is the education trail and not the enforcement trail. Because the enforcement trail divides people, makes things more difficult, and does not get buy-in from the general public. If you educate and you come from a good place, I think your end goal of compliance and defeating this COVID-19 will be a lot more successful through education. Those are my thoughts.
Chris, we've removed all the enforcement aspect based on your feedback, right? And the board's feedback. We have tried to meet you halfway. It is a very large educational component. I don't know what science are going to do. But this would be one thing to once again say to the public, the board is in favor and supports the wearing of masks. This is exactly what it is outlined. And if there's any question on the authority, it's already been determined through the Nashua case that was settled in court, where the judge said unless you've been living under a rock, right? That masks do work.
I'm not disputing that masks do not work. I am, I'm not disputing that masks do work. I am disputing how you go about getting as much of the population as possible to wear a mask. And I believe the education route is far more successful than the enforcement route.
Could I speak?
Absolutely.
I think we all have to remember here that we're all individuals. We all live in this town. Five of us are, are the, the official officials of this town. Our own personalities can take us wherever we want to go. But when there's an issue and a very strong, very powerful dangerous issue, I think it behooves this, this group to help this town to at least set a standard, a standard that should be met, a standard that can show people how to, how to get through this thing with a team effort and with all the other facts that can be put out there. We're not educators, but we can show people where the education is. But we are, we are the select board for this town. Our own personal thoughts, our own personal goals really don't come to play here. What does come to play is what this town will do and how this town can enforce the betterment of this, these issues. And if, if this board just decides that it's not up to that, then it's leaving everything else in this town, businesses, colleges, students, everybody, without a very powerful force, which is this board. And if this board just lets it go, this board is really showing itself to be useless. So I think we should really reconsider just what it is this can do. It can just show people that there is a positive influence. There's a strong influence, one can do these things. If, if, if we don't have that, they're not going to reach out to us, and we're not going to do as good a job as we're supposed to do here. So I ask you three to please reconsider what role you have. Role is this a person in residence, or role is one of the members of this board?
Thank you. Further comments from the board?
I make a motion to support this board of selection to adopt the, I want to make sure I get the name right. That I, I asked the board to approve the resolution of 20-21 relative to face coverings. With, with, with these edits that are done, and if any other edits come before us, then we can consider them.
I second it.
We have a motion made by Selectman Osgood, seconded by Selectman Hooper. Further discussion on the motion. Ready to call a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails, two to three. Item number nine, PA 28 inventory form update.
Mr. Divine. So this is going to be at our old business, it's a carryover from last meeting. There was some confusion and some discussion on whether the PA 28 form is actually necessary. So I had the opportunity to speak to the DRA about the P-28 form. I'm evaluating it. And speaking to Sam Green, who has worked for the DRA, he said the PA 28 form is a voluntary form that a vast majority of municipalities and states have abandoned use of. Typically, the PA 28 form is used to pick up property changes. And most municipalities use it due to not having the building inspection or permitting process. So in looking at the old minutes, it appears that our previous successor did come to the board and speak about the PA 28 form, and he did bring up the $5,000 rule as a fact of why you should be adopting the PA 28 form. And speaking to the DRA, it's the state constitution that requires us to do a reevaluation every five years. They don't dictate what type of evaluation we have to do, whether it be a full measure or a statistical measure. They recommend you do the full measure every 10 years in order to fully inventory your property. So again, I'm looking for the board to decide if they want to move forward with the PA 28 form, or if they would like to discontinue the use. So to be clear, on the PA 28, the original instructions that we received kind of guided the board to adopt the PA 28, and that guidance has now changed. Is that correct? It has changed. So again, when speaking to the DRA, every municipality by state constitution is required to do a reevaluation every five years. The state constitution does not dictate what type of reevaluation you have to complete every five years. They make the recommendation that you do a full measure every 10 years. And the reason they want to do a full measure is Nashua is the case law that followed. They didn't do a full measure for almost 20 years, and the property values obviously fluctuated greatly because of it, which is why they give that guidance. So you can do a statistical every five years and then do the off-year, do the full measure, which is what we've been doing. But the PA 28 form doesn't make that a requirement. Again, the PA 28 form only picks up property changes is the idea behind it. So because we had the $5,000 rule in Hennecker prior to the zoning permitting process, anybody who did property changes would be required to submit these PA 28 forms and voluntarily let the town know of any building improvements they've done to the property. That was the purpose behind the PA 28 form. I can tell you that since the zoning permit has come in, the actual inspection of the permitting processes between June and July, we've gone up 55% in the permits that we've accepted. So a lot more permits are coming in now with the zoning permit. People are aware that they need to file these.
Very good. Questions from the, from Flynn?
I remember when that form was introduced many years ago. I was telling you at the time, and it was mainly because of the $5,000 thing. And the reason that Selectman supported that was they were picking up home improvements and things that were not put on any other form. They had no idea because they weren't getting building permits. And we all know the situation with building permits over the years, even when we thought they were legal. So that was the, the problem, to pick up on, on those that were dishonest on their property value, picking up dishonest from the fact that they didn't have a permit. So we never would know about it unless we rode by in the wintertime with the leaves all off the trees and could see that they built a $50,000 addition on the back of their house. And that's how we found a lot of that stuff. And if we found it and they lied on the PA 28, we could take them to court, and we have more leverage doing that than we would taking them to court for not having a building permit. Because that was a legal document. That's really the reason why we started that. Today, without that permit and stuff, you know, I don't, and we're having a rebound. We're going to have a statistical or a poll. I keep getting confused. Okay, what, that means somebody goes out and measures?
That, that means they look at the real estate values typically. So they look at the home sales, and that's how they start to begin. They look at our permitting, and that's how they gather the valuation.
Okay, then can they, they don't inspect the house or anything, well?
They, they drive by every house and look at that. But it's not a full measure where they're going out and measuring it.
So I mean, whether they could pick up new construction doing that, I'm not sure of it. I have nothing against the, that form being used this year. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Parker, do you have an opinion?
Just a simple question, Joe. Do you recommend that we keep using it? Or do you think it's worth saving the staff time by just doing away with the darn thing?
And, and speaking to Helga, who is the one who'd be processing all of these forms, the value that we get is minimal. Does I move to not?
I'll take the administrator's advice, and I support that with a second.
Very good. We have a motion made by Mr. Parker and a second by Mr. Flynn. Further discussion on the motion. In light of the shifting landscape regarding why we adopted it and all that stuff, I'm perfectly willing to change my mind and concur with my fellow selectmen. So call the vote. All those in favor? Motion carries three to none.
Two minute break.
Two minute break. You sure can.
All those that go out, what do you really pick up off it?
We pick up a slide. We pick up essentially $200,000 in assessed value, which worked out to be about $7,000 in taxes. When we look at Helga's costs, it comes in just shy of $6,000. So we're making essentially $1,000 in taxes to do all the work. Yeah, so.
This, this, do you call it statistical?
Yes. They go by every property and look at it. Correct. They pull the ones that are sold to look at the values, and that's how they kind of gauge you. But they do go by every property. They're just not a full measure that actually getting out and asking to come into your home and look at it. That's the major difference. They're doing it right now. Well, we were due for it this year, but because of COVID, unfortunately, we weren't able to do it. So we're going to be due for it in 2025, on the 5th of September. I don't have a problem with that, no, I'm sorry. That would obviously change too after the assessment. We're going to get a new, a re. Yeah.
Granted, assessments go up and values go down, but at least if you bring everything in, some people. We have prevalued on here, and our project is going down because we have recorded what we've done over the years. If you don't report it, then you have this off balance. You know, and it's, it's only fair that everybody.
Yep.
Most of the bad ones will do that for a while. Should be totally different.
I guess it's good that we're getting it before the election, then. Correct. Well, I think the, the, the problem you run into though is it's kind of fuzzy math. Because yeah, your tax rate is going down, your property values go up, your taxes are going to come out of your watch, and it's much the change of this, technically. But the least sane is actually coming down. Exactly.
Okay, let the record reflect that Leon has rejoined the meeting, moving along to item 10, acceptance of board minutes with Leon College, July 22, 2020. And I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Mr. Flynn. All those in favor? Motion carries three to zero. Item 11, acceptance of board selection minutes, public, August 11. For those following the home version, this is page 24 in your PDF.
I'd like to make a correction.
Okay.
On page number, well, it says 25 on the copy here. Down at the third from the bottom paragraph, the last sentence said, "Flynn stated the bridge was the only source of crossing the river into West Hennecker for over 50 years." It should read five years.
By a fact, it took 50 years.
That was an exaggeration.
That's my correction.
Further changes or edits on the public minutes of August 11, 2020. Make a motion to approve, moved to approve, made by Selectman Parker, seconded by Chris Blombek. Further discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries three to none. Acceptance of non-public minutes, August 11. Motion made by Selectman Parker, seconded by Selectman Blombek. All those in favor? Leon? Yep, motion approves, three to none. Acceptance of board of selection minutes, August 12. This is page 33, PDF.
So moved.
Moved by Peter, seconded by Leon. All those in favor? Department reports, item 14.
Again, this just serves as an update for the board to let them aware of what's going on with each department.
Paychecks. I, I would think this is probably an appropriate place for me to inject a comment about one of our departments. I've received several compliments for Leon's work with Town Road Crew. And I've driven over Patterson Hill several times, as recently as today, and also traveled around the repaved streets in the college area. And, and we're already looking much better than we have for the last 25 years. I really appreciate the job he's been doing.
And if I could follow up on that, just so everybody's aware, we actually had a pre-construction meeting on Monday for Western Ave, for the new section. And they're going to be posting signage, hopefully they're mobilizing this week, and they're hoping to get going on the culverts within the next week or so. So you'll see some signage going up. I believe they're looking to maybe close Western Ave during the day, and Neo has given the go-ahead on that as well, just to make it easier for everybody. Because there is multiple groups, obviously, to get into Hillsborough without using Western Ave, so.
Can you speak to Russ's comments here about direct deposit and the need for additional software of $10,000? And the sick vacation time policy being printed on the checks?
He hasn't spoken to me about this, so I can't speak to that.
Okay. If it's truly going to cost us $10,000 to put that information on the pay stub, and it is not required by law, I would be against spending that kind of money.
I, I want to say, if you look at the updates, that was his original comment when we, when we went to look at the direct deposits.
Oh, okay.
For Sage to be able to do that, that was what we originally came up with. From my understanding and speaking to Checkmate, which is our new payroll servicing, they plan on having the vacation and sick time on the paychecks in September.
So it's not.
So there's no additional cost on what we're already paying per check right now.
Yeah.
So.
I am.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
As the people watching payroll reflected that they've got purchase, that they're related.
Yes. They have, then, yes. Russ has followed up on that. Not that I'm aware of. Nobody has said any, anything about the increase in their check.
Any other questions about department reports? Thank you, Leon, for the kind words for the highway department. Moving along to item 15, this would be town administrator reports. Joe?
So I want to give an update just on NEC. Obviously, that seems to be a hot topic. On Thursday of last week, we had a meeting with officials from NEC. We brought together the police department, the fire department, rescue department, and then NEC's health department, as well, as well as their public safety and their administration. I mean, just kind of talked about where they're at. Just so everybody's aware, they've conducted essentially 750 COVID-19 tests for the Hennecker population right now. That's the campus there. They've had six positives, which is less than a 1%, of their population. Obviously, these are all people who are coming into the school a positive. These are not community transmissions, so they're not being passed along in the dorms. And speaking to them, they plan on testing everybody this week again, Wednesday and Thursday, because classes are going to be starting in person next Tuesday. So this next round of testing will tell us if there's been any community transmission within NEC. The Tucker Free Library is going to be opening up starting September 15 to the public again. The trustees have met this week, or late last week, I'm sorry. And they have decided, so their hours of operation will be Tuesday through Saturday, 10 to 3, and the library will reopen from 5 to 7 on Thursday evenings to offer service to community patrons. Again, guests are going to be required to wear masks while in the library, and their visits can be limited to 30 minutes. They're also installing self-checkout stations, so they won't have to have contact with anybody. They'll be able to check out their own books at their own time and just leave the library in a minute. NHMA legislative policy update. NHMA is going to be having a legislative policy conference held on Friday, October 2nd, looking for each municipality to attend. Each governing body is asked to delegate somebody to avoid the policy recommendations for NHMA. So I'm looking to the board to see if they want me to do that for them at the conference.
Yes.
That works.
Can I have a. I can sense it.
So I'm good. I'll go right on that. So when I first started, a big topic was the Crane Hill Radio Tower, was something we were looking to do to try to get better communications up on the tower due to the fact that during storms, we seemed to lose it, because the generator, we have a handheld generator that we're basically tracking gas up and down the hill for. We did have a meeting with Homeland Security, our representative Julia Chase, who is looking to secure some grant money for us to do that. So we're going to be, hopefully, there's an intent that's been filed to get the actual dollar, dollar amount. There will be some match from the town. I know some of it will be in kind with Leo's work, doing work up on the road and doing work on the site. I'm not sure as far as the dollar value, no, but I wanted to let you know that we are now that the state's starting to operate a little bit more. We did get that as information. And then finally, the CARES Act grant money. So this is something we've been talking about a lot. We've submitted a final, our CARES grant, the police payroll, which you guys authorized to do back to their last meeting in August. I'm trying to figure out what the board's pleasure is with some of this money that we received. Essentially, it's going to be close to $85,000 that we're going to get in this next round. You know, we've talked about outfitting this as a more permanent meeting location. I think that's a great idea. I think this would be a good use of some of that money. Another idea that we had is the possibility of creating more office space if we are going to use this as a more permanent meeting location, maybe putting up a wall in town hall to create more office space to get a little things more reconfigured. Chairman?
Office space is overhead.
What's that?
Office space is overhead.
It's, it's overhead anyway, because we're, we're using it. So it'd probably have a smaller conference room with my idea within the town hall. So I just wanted to get the board's feelings about that, obviously, just to see what their thoughts were on this.
I think a lot for the middle of the office, and let's be believed, let's the boardroom.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I think the idea is, you know, to try to clean up town hall a little bit. You know, we have a lot of stacked offices. You know, maybe, in my opinion, you know, move the assessing department over towards land use to create more space. Maybe where assessing is now, create more of an office as far as where all our printers are going to be for storage, get some of the filing cabinets in there, create more of a central location for everything, so it's not all through the halls. And again, it's just, just some initial thoughts.
Yes. Joe, I think I mentioned this to you once before. Going back in history, when this building was turned over to the town, attorney Astro, then our attorney here, worked out the deal and the acceptance of it, there were several conditions. Those conditions are in the, in the deed. I think I asked you to look up the deed and find out that we're not restricted, because we do have to allow this room for certain things, for public use. However, I don't want to get into the same situations we just had with that damn Leaver up here, but we want to make sure we're doing it all the right way.
And I think the room, you know, and looking at the covenants that go around it, I think, you know, we have to still open the space up for public use as far as for civic organizations, whether it be the Boy Scouts or things like that. And I think turning, turning this into more permanent or meeting location, I think we can still achieve that possibility with that.
You would consider moving all the.
Selectmen's.
I would. Because I, I, that's a nice setup.
I, I would consider, that's, that's what I would like to. Yep.
On your report, can I, is it, is this proper to ask him to do something for us? Not a major thing. You want to have privately had a conversation, not in power, you and I, concerning the sign in front of the green, it continuously goes up. Now, we, we probably don't have to enforce a sign permit, generally speaking, but they are not a town organization, so I, there's a question of whether that's true or not. But we do have to, I, in my opinion, have to enforce the Hennecker Historical District Commission regulations, which has to approve any sign or change or anything on the property. Now, there are two signs in the back of the building, it's got to look like a sign square back there, we have no board. One of those signs should be removed, in my opinion, and they say the same thing, but they're pretty big. The other one is, keeps getting brought out to the front of the building, hunking the grass. And that is something I think the Historical District Committee should approve. I'm not saying I'm against it, but let's go through the right procedure.
I will follow up on that, and I will have them fill out a sign permit to get in for the historical commission.
And when it comes to selectman's comments, I will talk through it.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Selectmen reports, Chris, nothing. Peter?
Okay, I just want to talk about tonight for a couple of seconds. I was a little disappointed tonight. It got a little bit out of hand, I thought, mostly from the audience. And I was disappointed in that. I don't think, and it's not the first time we've heard this kind of rhetoric, but I, there are many things that I've seen come before this board. The last time somebody walked out, I was on the board, I know Leon was, 12 years ago, when we were trying to, not we, but the selectmen were discussing for like six months a particular ordinance pertaining to class six roads and, and the, and the, selectmen were working on it, we actually had separate meetings to discuss it. And again, I'm sitting over there in Joe's seat, watching this, putting it all through each week with corrections, lots of town council in board, and then the night came to vote on it, and it was very similar to tonight. The board voted no, and it really shocked the opponent, who was then the chairman. That's when the chairman of the board stepped down. And he, he also walked out. Closed his book, threw it down, he says, get your own new chairman, I'm out of here. And he, and he stepped down as chairman and never wanted to be chairman. I thought he left the board, but he didn't. But he left, and that's the last time I saw him. That's like 12 years ago, until tonight. And I was really disappointed, and I'm not chastising these people for doing it, they have the right to do it, but it's too bad that that had to happen. I do want to point out one thing that was said, and I believe Scott said it, and if you're listening, Scott, you might be able to clarify this to me tomorrow, but I think I heard something to the effect that if the board does not support a resolution, then we're useless, something to that effect. Did I hear that, or?
That's my interpretation.
Yeah, I, I don't think the board is useless. I think we're just out of anger, maybe. But I, I really, I, I've been mad, I mean, in my early days in this business, I used to snap pretty quick, you know, raise my voice a lot quicker and louder, but as you get older and you get through this stuff, you've seen it all before. Leon and I together have seen a lot of things together, where people got upset, walked out, slammed things, including one of our members of the audience tonight, and you've seen it before. But I think what we all have to strive to do is keep a, keep a good professional demeanor wherever possible. I make a strong point, like I did tonight about free people, not, yes, I did know that was, but that, you know, that's probably the strongest part, my voice got all night. But I'm just saying to all of us here, and I'm sure colleagues may be tuned into the streams of whatever this is here, Zoom, it, it would be really something we all want to try to baku and we all have to know that we're not going to win all the time. And I never let anybody on of the people that wanted this to go through. I never let on that I was one way or the other. I did indicate it for last meeting, but I will say that I got some, I got a couple letters, we all got the same letters, probably three or four people, but I got more people on the street complimenting my acting of not supporting it. So it goes two ways, but we've got to draw ourselves out, we've got to really behave, which we're doing, but I think we've got to keep the crowd that way too. But just walking out of a meeting to me, it's disappointing, and I'm, I'm very saddened about that. I, I know people get upset, but, you know, we're all elected to win or lose these arguments. We're not elected to win them all, or get our crowd to come in the audience and support you and, you know, kind of, it didn't happen tonight, maybe, but I think we probably indicated it at the last meeting, but we have to really understand that we're never going to win everything we want. I've lost some, you know, some proposals, and I can't remember what, but, you know, I went back, I stayed till the end of the night, and I come back to the next meeting, and on with business. We are not useless. We put together a book tonight that has umpteen things on the agenda. We all worked hard, read it, I read all my material. I and Leon and all, some of us have worked on a book called Selectment Policy, which I'm all for. I may bring it up once in a while, but we're not wobbling. Chris knows I stick up for that stuff. But the thing is, that's not part of being useless on this board. There's so many things we do that I do every day that's helping somebody. A lady got on Facebook, I know I'm going over here, a lady got on Facebook this week and said, I thought Peter Flynn liked to help people in this stuff. That hurt, I mean, that's, that was, you know, if she was sitting up there tonight. It's things like that, we put up with that, but we just go on to the next day. At first, we go on to the next day, we come to the next meeting, we have friendships that I hope will always last. We had a selectman that I replaced, he won wood with a few years ago, and, you know, there were issues, but you know, they come and they go, they come and they go. So I'm all for being courteous and also not holding as great with my fellow colleagues. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else on selectmen reports for you, Peter? Leon?
You know, my comments about Leo. I already made my comments about the highway department. And I think I mentioned the last time that we're going to be in our next meeting here some, some following Tuesday, we're going to be doing more in terms of figuring out how we're going to approach next year, how we're going to approach the old Bill's Road Road. Leo's working with contractors, he's had a couple of them out there already, not to do a bidding process or anything like that, just to get ideas of how to split that job, because we've got to find out where we think it makes the most sense and what we can afford to do next year, because that's going to be a two-year project probably.
Very good. Anything else?
I move, we adjourn.
Oh, hang on. It is time now for public commentary number two. Seeing that there are no members of the audience, are there any members of Zoom who wish to chime in? Joe?
I have no hands up at this time.
Very good. Any non-public?
Nope.
Seeing that we have no non-public agenda items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Selectman Parker, seconded by Selectman Flynn, all those in favor. Motion carries three to nothing. Thank you all for attending and watching online tonight.